Good evening, Commissioners, Staff, Members of the Public Present. It is 7:03. We have started the meeting.
If we could please have a roll call?
Commissioner Van Galen?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Vice Chair Menthee?
Present.
Chair Baumann?
Present.
Thank you. We have five Commissioners present.
Great, thank you. If we could rise, if you're able, to have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. If we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
We do not have anyone registered to speak.
Okay, great, thank you. Receipt of correspondence, I believe we didn't have any this afternoon, but if anything has come in since then?
That is correct. We did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, great. So, moving to quickly the consent calendar items. Approval of draft minutes from January 22, 2025, and February 12, 2025. We moved these forward from our last meeting because we didn't have a quorum between the two minutes. If there's any comments on those minutes?
My only request is can we take them separately because we may need to?
Okay, we can take them separately. So, C1 is minutes of January 22, 2025. Any comments on that? Do we have a motion to approve?
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Menthee. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with four ayes.
Thank you, Ruth. Then, moving to C2, which is minutes of the February 12 meeting. Did you have a comment on that, Vice Chair? No?
I was not here and will be abstaining.
Okay, great. So, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Can I have a second, please? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Jones, second by Vice Chair Baumann. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passes with three ayes.
Thank you. So, we will move to item A1, which is receipt and update of the Hayden Tract specific plan and discussion and comments. And I believe we might have a recusal?
Yes, I've been advised I live within 500 feet of the Hayden Tract, and therefore I will be recusing myself for consideration this item, and I'll be in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come get you unless you can hear us when we switch. Great. So, we, moving on into that item, if we could please have a staff report, I'd appreciate it. Troy, thanks.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Troy Evangelou, Advanced Planning Manager, and I'm joined with our consultant Susan from AECOM, and we're pleased to present our progress so far on the Hayden Tract specific plan. Quickly, the items we'll be covering tonight, we're going to talk about the reason behind having a specific plan, a quick overview of the document focusing on some of the content. You'll notice there's three main areas the plan will cover, one being land use and zoning, the second being roads and mobility, and the third, parks and public amenities. We'll share some of the feedback we've heard from our community outreach, and also talk about next steps for the project and pose some questions for the Commission to consider. So, why are we pursuing a specific plan for the Hayden Tract? Our 2045 general plan identified the Hayden Tract as a future study area, and this is an area that's transitioning from former industrial to a higher-density mixed-use, and so we thought that that warranted a further study and analysis and plan for the neighborhood. We're looking at improvements for transit connections to the nearby train stations, and also wanted to highlight that as turning it to high-density mixed-use, adding residential to this area, it is a component of our housing element and our housing plan for the city, and it's a part of how we're looking to meet our regional housing needs allocation arena. A quick overview of the planned area, so the boundaries are national to the north and Bayona Creek to the south and west, and then the Rancho Higuera neighborhood to the east. And picking up where the general plan left off and including some of the policies from the general plan, things we're looking to do is, again, introduce residential into this area, but also allow for continued development of commercial, retail, office, and mixed-use. Also, we're looking at creating development standards that are compatible with some of the unique architecture that we have in the area. And then, again, looking at those connections and walkability, how do we connect to the nearby train stations and just improve the mobility experience in the Hayden Tract? And I wanted to highlight some questions upfront before we get into the bulk of the presentation, just highlight a couple of things for you to consider and think about. Again, we have three main sections of this document, one of them being mobility, and some of the things that we would like you to consider are, you know, the sidewalk conditions out there, some of these narrow sidewalks with power lines in the middle of them, it's not very conducive to pedestrian travel. Also, as I mentioned, access to the nearby train stations, how to improve park access, our closest parks are Sid Cronenthal and Baldwin Hill scenic outlook, and also potential opportunities for new open space in the Hayden Tract, whether it's provided as part of a private development or something for the public. And then, also, we want to bring up the discussion of height and potential for height increases in the area. And so, with that, I would like to invite our consultant Susan from AECOM to proceed with the rest of the presentation.
Susan Ambrosini with AECOM. All right, so as Troy mentioned, there's generally three kind of buckets that we can think of in terms of where the specific plan content or what it will include. So, buildings and land use, things like design and development standards that impact the private buildings in the private realm, mobility, streets and sidewalks, so policies, implementation programs, concepts, and potentially some standards too related to streets and sidewalks, and then finally policies, implementation programs, some concepts around parks and public amenities. So, just a little more detail here. So, as Troy mentioned, this is the, the basis is the general plan, so that's really the guiding framework. So, as the general plan establishes really generalized land use designations, the specific plan, as the name implies, we'll get more into the nitty-gritty about building types and uses. So, a more fine-grained look at types of commercial uses or types of, you know, hotel or light industrial type of uses and which would be permitted or not permitted in the area. And then, secondly, design and development standards. So, this is kind of a high-level sampling of the type of standards that might be in the specific plan. So, covering things like, you know, height, setbacks, step backs, modulation potentially, transparency, open space requirements, for example. Then, in terms of mobility, streets and sidewalks, there's a lot of opportunity to improve pedestrian and cycling connections, both within the district, to the E-line, to downtown, connections to the Bayona Creek. So, we'll be looking at all of these opportunities in detail. We'll also be looking at potential public realm standards, so maybe some basics around minimum sidewalk widths, parkway requirements, landscaping, things like this to help improve the public realm in the area. And then, in terms of parks and public amenities, figuring out where are there opportunities for pocket parks, gathering spaces, programming, connections to Bayona Creek and to the bike path, and then looking at through implementation programs potentially, what are opportunities to help fund some of these public improvements? So, as I mentioned earlier, the general plan is a basis for the specific plan. The general plan set a height limit of 56 feet for the, for the Hayden Tract, but staff wanted to get feedback from the Planning Commission about whether to explore potentially a second alternative with increased height. And so, that's what you're looking at right now with the slide. So, on the left, we have the Alternative 1, which is essentially the status quo of the general plan as it is today with a height limit of 56 feet. Alternative 2 on the right shows an example of potentially increasing height, so keeping height the same around the residential neighborhoods, but potentially stepping up to around 75 feet in the core or 85, for example, along the creek path. So, the idea here, kind of pushing some of the height away from the residential neighborhoods and potentially creating opportunities to frame the creek with some taller buildings and offer opportunities for more housing, for example, along the creek. So, just a side note about the 3D model, you know, as in many areas, many of the buildings will stay in the foreseeable future. So, we assumed the buildings in white are buildings that potentially could remain, where we included in the model some buildings that might, you know, increase to this, this new height. These are not potential projects. We did not pick specific parcels, so it's really just illustrative. But hopefully, it gives you a sense of, of the potential alternative too that we would like to get your feedback on. So, we've already started community outreach. It really began with stakeholder conversations starting in February and ongoing. So, we've spoken with architects, developers, local residents, schools. We'll continue to speak to different stakeholders as the process continues. On March 18th, we held our first open house. It was a great event, very well attended. Within the Hayden Tract, we had 63 people attending just in person, but we also had a virtual open house that was launched the same day as the in-person open house. That's what's shown here in the photo on the right. It's essentially a replica of the in-person open house, so it allows somebody virtually on their phone or on their computer to really explore the open house rooms, see the same boards as someone could see in person, provide feedback. There's a link to a survey as well. We've already received many survey responses, over, I think, 200 unique visitors to the virtual open house. So, some great attendance there. And then, obviously, tonight, we're with, with you all in Planning Commission, but we're going to City Council on April 28th. So, what did the community say so far? Certainly, we heard concerns around parking, traffic, sidewalks, as Troy mentioned. The side, many of the sidewalks are, you know, difficult to navigate within the district. We did share the two alternatives for the height that I just shared with you earlier. We got mixed reactions. It was interesting. There are several people who are really excited about increased height, several people who are not. Some were concerned about increased traffic that might be related to increased height. So, it's a real mixed bag. In general, we got support for revitalized mixed-use neighborhood, creating a walking, walkable district with new gathering spaces, and a really big one was better connections to Bayona Creek. That came up over and over and over again. Mobility was a really hot topic at the open house. And then, finally, before I hand it back over to Troy, this is our timeline. So, in terms of engagement, as I mentioned, we're going to council soon. We'll continue with the stakeholder meetings, and then likely, our next open house will be around early September. And then, from a technical standpoint, we've included, or we've completed, an initial first push of existing conditions analyses, and then we'll shift to economic and mobility analyses. Then, this summer, we'll get into starting to draft some of the planned vision and then start doing testing related to the preferred alternative before we get into drafting the plan into the, you know, fall and winter of next year. So, that's it. I'll hand it back over to Troy.
Thank you. One last slide, and again, this is a repeat of the slide we shared earlier, just trying to prompt some potential questions. You know, this is our, our first time checking in. We're very early on in the planned development stage, and so we're looking for feedback and guidance at this point. And I know we have opportunity for public comment, but just wanted to highlight again, we could revisit this slide if we, if we needed to during the discussions.
Great, thank you for that. We can leave this up right now. Before we move to public comment, do Commissioners have any kind of staff logistical kind of specific questions? I have a big list of stuff. I'm sure everybody does, but we want to hear from public as well. But before we do that, is there anything? Commissioner Van Galen?
Yes. In terms of the Alternative 2, which would be, I think you mentioned it would be in contradiction to this general plan. Would there be a change to the general plan required to accommodate that?
So, the general plan doesn't outline height. It has density for maximum residential, and it also has FAR for non-residential. I think once, if we decided to go with that higher height, increased height alternative, we would have to kind of analyze what that means for the FARs if those would need to be adjusted. So, it's not a certainty yet, but potentially, we would need to do an amendment.
I want to follow that a little bit. The alternative, that's a base height, right? I mean, even on the Alternative 1, 56-foot height, with DOBE, density and other bonus incentives, it could potentially go beyond 56 feet. So, Alternative 2 would be setting a different base height that then DOBE would add to?
That's correct. Yes.
I have, I have one question. So, we're talking about all kinds of buildings or only residential and mixed-use? Like, could we be talking about, like, a straight office building here?
Right. So, the, the zoning in place now, which we're looking to continue with, is our industrial mixed-use zoning, and that allows kind of the full suite of different types of uses. So, you could have a standalone office building. You could have retail, restaurant, commercial. You could have standalone residential, or you could have a traditional mixed-use with, like, a ground-floor retail and upper-floor residential.
Okay, thanks.
Do we know from the consultant, you said there were a certain number of responses. Do we know kind of how many responses, how many versus the people who attended in person, like, what are those, what are those numbers? I know it's hard to know how many people visited the virtual site, which I went to, but versus the people who showed up in person and the survey responses?
Yeah, so as of April 1st, we had 140 unique visitors to the Hayden Tract site. That's over 1,000 page views, but we look more at the unique visitors. You know, we'll look at individual IP addresses, so we're not double counting folks. So, the average visit duration was four minutes and eight seconds, so they're spending actually a really good amount of time on the site, which is great. In terms of the survey for the Hayden Tract, we've received 155 responses. So, really great kind of online virtual participation in addition to the 63 people who came in person. So, we're still culling through the responses, so we, we don't have detailed information about what was said tonight. They're still actually live and active, but we could certainly share in the future what they had to say.
In the timeline, is there a spot where we stop or where you summarize that information? I know you're, we're going to council soon. In the timeline, when does that kind of data get presented with progress for kind of digestion at the same time?
Yeah, it's a really good question. We haven't talked about a specific cutoff date with city staff yet, but ultimately, at some point, we do need to draw the line so that we can look at the information gleaned. We'll most likely keep the virtual open house online. We might take down the survey link if we do decide to stop the survey. But in general, based on previous projects, having as much information online, even if someone's submitting a survey late, doesn't mean that we don't want their information. So, in general, we tend to keep it up and still just incorporate the feedback.
So, at one of our kind of touchpoints in the future timeline, you and staff will summarize some of that survey data for Commission and the public?
Some of that's been included already. We took a snapshot of the data and we kind of summarized it and put it in the staff report already. And we've been talking about having it go through, towards the end of the month, so end of April being maybe the cutoff point where we would do the hard cut and kind of analyze the data.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else before we open public comment? Okay, can I have a motion to open public comment?
Do we need a motion with the, it's not a public hearing, right?
I think we, oh, we don't. Okay. Let's go ahead and hear from the public. Madam Clerk, who do we have? How many speakers do we have?
We have five speakers registered to speak.
Okay, let's give everybody three minutes.
All right. I'll read out the five that we have registered, so you, you are prepared and ready. Joanna Gulick, Beth Lane, Simon Horvitz, David Hopman, and Diana Hopman. I will now call Joanna Gulick.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Johanna Gulick. It's the seagull, "gull." You know, I'm here, I'm a resident of Rancho Higuera, and I'm speaking tonight in support of the Hayden Traffic, the Hayden Tract specific plan visioning process before you tonight. The Hayden Tract has been an eclectic commercial and industrial area for over 30 years, thanks to Mark Winograd. A specific plan that lays out a new vision for the Tract, I'm very excited about it because I, I believe it, that we will continue that eclectic, and I hope we will continue that eclectic feel that we have in the Hayden Tract. And I walk it every day, and I, and I just love it there. I'm very pleased to see that the rezoning in the neighborhood amenities proposed will create what I think of as a village feel for the Hayden Tract. The recommendations by staff include street improvements, amenities, green space, sidewalks, all the things that you just saw, and additional mobility solutions will be a real plus for the area. But the adjacency to transit is vital, and it is part of why we can increase the density in the Hayden Tract because of that transit. The massing, in terms of the massing, I concur with the visioning density of number two. I think it's great. And I like that the density is, is pushed to the creek and that is a sensitivity to the, to the Rancho neighbors that, that abut the Hayden Tract. But what's most important to me is the affordable housing. While mixed-use zoning will include residential, the need for affordable housing for our workforce is a significant component of any proposed increase in density. If the Planning Commission recommends the maximum density, which would be up to 85 feet in height or maybe more, as the chair has pointed out, then I think that it would be very important, and I would suggest that with that maximum density, there'd be a requirement to provide 20% affordable housing in those larger properties, in those larger projects. The, the Hayden Tract is adjacent to a large job center, and the need for housing our workers is critical to minimizing traffic and encouraging a mixed-income population in our city. The Hayden Tract is just south of the Rancho Higuera neighborhood. It's not east, it's northwest. And it, basically, those streets, Hayden, we, we pick up all the traffic coming, coming north trying to go to the freeway, and we are a small two-lane street. That's what Higuera is. And we're very grateful to the city for the traffic intrusion measures that have been put in place, but that two-lane street cannot carry all that traffic. So, we would, I would recommend, just one sentence, I would recommend, thank you. I would recommend a cul-de-sac, and that we shut traffic off at that point, because otherwise, we will be inundated even more than we are now. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Lane.
Hi. Am I being heard?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I am Beth Lane, the Rancho Higuera Neighborhood Association Board President, and I just want to thank the Hayden Tract for their outreach workshop and their stakeholder meeting that they held with our neighborhood association back in March, as well as the March 18th meeting over at the Veterans Memorial. I thought that was a very well-organized event, and I attended it. And I think there was, as she mentioned, quite a few members of the neighborhood, 63 members, attended, and 155 responses to their survey was some good feedback. and 155 responses to their survey was some good feedback. But I just want to mention tonight, in being, in knowing that the Hayden Tract will be developing, as Joanna mentioned, more mixed-use properties, commercial and residential, I would like the committee, the planning committee, to just remember that our cut-through traffic was a huge concern for us, meeting with the traffic and mobility engineers as far back as 2017. So we're looking at almost an eight- or nine-year project that we patiently been waiting for, our NTMP, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program of Phase One and Phase Two to be implemented. Phase One, I was told today, I spoke with Andrew Maximus, the current traffic and mobility engineer manager at the city, he mentioned that there is a request for proposal that is on the table, and we are going to be doing some workshops where we have new analysis being done by a transportation engineering company that will be doing those analysis. But I feel that even with these analyses or analysis that is going on with the community, we don't want to forget that this process took us almost 10 years because of COVID to finally see Phase One implemented in 2021, which was about six years after we spoke to the city about it. And if we have to wait another six or seven years while things are being developed around us, there will be more than 9,000 cars daily, as a cut-through number, we were told nine years ago from the traffic analysis. Roughly 9,500 cars come from the east side heading north towards the 10 on Higera alone. And that's because the Higera Bridge was being constructed, these results, or I should say, these analysis were done before the Higera Bridge closed for construction. So those were numbers we were told years ago. And if we have another analysis that tells us that we now have 10,500 or 12,000 cars, the new Hayden development will be, as Joanna mentioned, an overwhelm that is just too ugly to talk about. The three streets of Shaper, Helms, and Wesley have road rage in the morning and bottleneck traffic, people not allowing them out of their driveways to take their kids to school or go to work safely and comfortably. That is a concern that has been going on since Phase One was implemented in 2021. So we've still been watching cut-through traffic, we've still been watching bottlenecking and road raging. Just as Joanna mentioned, this too, I mean, if we were to have even those little commuter transit cars coming from the metro, bringing employees or residents to the Hayden Tract, once things are developed, it still doesn't stop the major pain, which is the cut, the cut-through, people trying to get to the 10. So a cul-de-sac, even though this is my own strong
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. The cul-de-sac is my last comment. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Simon Horwitz. Go ahead, Simon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Simon Horwitz, and I've been a resident of the Rancho Higera neighborhood and a member of the Rancho Higera Neighborhood Association since the early 90s. Our neighborhood was established in response to overwhelming cut-through traffic, over 20,000 cars a day using Higera Street as a shortcut between Washington and Jefferson Boulevards. This constant flow created excessive noise and posed serious dangers for pedestrians, making our daily life in our neighborhood difficult and unsafe. After working with the city, a diverter was installed that redirected traffic from Higera onto the Hayden Tract. That one intervention made a world of difference. It reduced vehicle volumes on Higera to about 8,000 cars per day, and restored some measure of peace and safety to our residential streets. The aim was always clear, to direct heavy traffic to larger purpose-built corridors like National Boulevard, not through narrow neighborhood streets. But over time, traffic has steadily increased again. Today, Rancho Higera is home to many young families. Children walk to school, play outside, and live in, live their lives here. The rising traffic volume is once again putting their safety at risk. At the same time, Culver City has experienced tremendous growth, more build, more office buildings, more businesses, and more commuters, adding even more pressure on our streets. Now, with plans underway for further development in the Hayden Tract, including additional workspaces and residential units, we are concerned that this already fragile balance will break if no other action, if no action is taken, traffic will once again flood our neighborhood streets. That's why we are asking the city to take a long, overdue step. Install a permanent cul-de-sac at the end of Higera Street where it meets Hayden Tract. This is not a radical proposal, it's a practical and necessary one. These are two fundamentally different zones. The Hayden Tract is a commercial zone and industrial area, while Rancho Higera is a residential neighborhood. Trucks and commercial traffic do not belong in a space where children walk and play and live. We also know the solution can work. The Hayden Tract already has ample access from other directions. There's no need for traffic to cut through Higera Street to reach that area. A cul-de-sac would not limit access to the Hayden Tract, would simply preserve the integrity of both areas. Let's keep the two zones distinct, residents and families in the Rancho Higera, and businesses and workers in the Hayden Tract. These two uses are not compatible with, within, within the same traffic corridor, and now is the time to take a leap and implement a sustainable solution that ensures both areas remain vibrant, safe, and livable, one for working and the other for living. Thanks so much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hauptmann.
Good evening. I'm David Hauptmann, and I've lived in Rancho Higera for over 50 years, and our kids, children have gone to school in Culver City, and actually, my grandkids have gone to school here. The one thing that I don't really understand is that I worked very hard many years ago with many other people who were around, so that we would have a 56-foot height limit, and it seemed to be pretty much like a done deal. And all of a sudden, I hear talk about 75 and 85 feet. And I would suggest that the commission would ask the attorney, city attorney, to let us know definitely what's going on. Can they change it? It used to be that we voted for the 56-foot height limit, and it was part, became part of the city charter. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's saying, oh, no, that doesn't count. So I would appreciate it if through, through the city attorney or somebody else, we could find out whether or not that 56-foot height limit is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diana Hauptmann.
Good evening. I'm Diana Hauptmann, and I've lived on, in Rancho Higera for 50, 53 years, and we love our community very much. We've been very involved also. But we're very concerned with this development that you're proposing to come in the next few years. It will bring a lot of traffic onto Higera Street. And so, like my fellow neighbors that have come out tonight, we're very concerned about the traffic and other things, too, but the traffic on our, our street already is highly impacted, and we worry about our, our kids and our neighborhood. So we would like to see a cul-de-sac or some way to mitigate traffic into our community, so we can keep it a nice community as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the end of our speakers.
Thank you. Based on all that feedback and discussion, is there anything we want to direct to staff for questions? Troy, I think we should kind of respond to some of the stuff we're hearing, and then I would love for you to kind of pull out of us the questions you're looking for in a kind of more organized way.
Sure. So let me, let me address the discussion of the, the height, the 56-foot height limit. So in the 90s, there was an initiative that was passed to establish a 56-foot height limit in certain zones throughout the city. So, yeah, it was not a complete city-wide height initiative. It applied to certain commercial zones, and what we've done is kind of gone back to the original source and looked at the 1990 zoning map and those certain commercial zones that it applied to at the time, and followed the transition from the 1990 zoning code to the 2005 zoning code to the new 2024 zoning code we just adopted. And through that process, we're still in, researching it. We don't have it completely dialed in, where we have a memo and a map to sort of share its preliminary stages. But from the research that we've done, again, we found that the 56-foot height initiative applied to certain commercial zones, so it did not apply to residential zones. And part of that reason is because the residential zones weren't a concern. They had height limits that would, you know, two or three stories, and so, and they didn't apply to industrial zones. And so what we're looking at here in the Hayden Tract is a former industrial zone that's now been changed to industrial mixed-use, and which that 1990 height initiative does not apply to. And so that's the reason why we're proposing as one of the items for you to comment on and provide us feedback, is whether or not we pursue looking at increasing the height in this particular neighborhood. So.
Great, thanks. And just so, kind of, everybody understands, and this is something that I've been absorbing, and I think most of us who are not planning professionals, like, there is a base height limit, and I understand that there's a common misconception that thou shalt not break 56 feet in Culver City, and that's, it is a misconception, and that there's, you know, as Troy mentioned, you know, legislation, maps, et cetera, that define where that height limit is. But in addition to that, it's important to remember that state law and density bonus and other density, and other bonus initiatives, incentives, allow breaking through that 56 feet, even where it is defined within our city. And I think that that's, it's really important for the audience and the public and everybody to understand that, you know, even in a situation at a certain location where there is a 56-foot height limit by vote in the city on that parcel, state law allows breaking through that 56 feet because of affordable housing, because of other incentives. So I just want to make sure that that's crystal clear to everybody. Thank you, Troy, for clarifying that. The other thing I'd love to hear about is the cul-de-sac, like, that's a common thing, and I remember that you used to not be able to cross that bridge, or you crossed the bridge and there was that must-turn-right, must-turn-left kind of situation there. Can you address what the city has been doing related to that?
Yes, so I've been in coordination with our mobility manager, Andrew Maximus, in Public Works. What, what people are referring to, what you're referring to in that instance, is it's called the diverter, and basically, what it stops is through traffic, right? So you can't just drive from Jefferson through on Higera. It's going to force you to turn right or force you to turn left. And similarly, on the other end, driving eastbound on, on Higera, it's, it's gonna stop you from crossing over that Higera Bridge, it's gonna force you to turn left or turn right. And so that is a traffic control measure that's been in place for some time now. In addition to that, there were other traffic improvements installed throughout the neighboring Rancho Higera neighborhood. So a number of traffic circles, I don't know how familiar folks are with it, but there's, there's traffic circles instead of a four-way kind of stop. And currently, concurrent with the, the specific plan update we're working on, Public Works is working on a traffic study, a traffic analysis, and making some improvements in the neighboring Rancho Higera neighborhood. So a lot of those traffic circles are temporary, kind of, rubber-plastic, and through this process, Public Works is looking to make them permanent, metal, concrete. So, again, I've been coordinating with Andrew Maximus. He's, he's involved with this project as well, looking at the roadway designs, the street designs. He was out with us for the walking tour. So there's definitely coordination going on between both projects. I just want to make sure everyone knows that, that, you know, even though some of the traffic improvements going on in the neighboring Rancho Higera neighborhood is separate from us, it's very much coordinated.
Great, thanks. I'd like to kind of insert something here as well. Cut-through traffic, Culver City might as well be called Cut-Through City, right? Like, we are unfortunately just in the way for the, the rest of Los Angeles and Santa Monica and everybody else to get from here to there. It's not just Rancho Higera, it's Clarkdale, where I live, it's Fox Hills, where other people live. Like, it's the, the unfortunate result of, you know, popularity of our city, of population in the west side, of ways and traffic applications that know and divert people now to formerly unknown cut-throughs. Like, that's, it's, it's really hard. So it's, I understand the, the interest to say, put a wall up at the end of your neighborhood to keep it from happening there, but it happens all through the city, and it's really hard to kind of handicap the, the community movement and the mobility between the rest of the city and the neighborhood, and now the Hayden Tract, right? You know, the distinct, the comment about being distinct between residential and commercial, Hayden, this, this specific plan is really trying to leverage mixed-use. It will no longer be distinct. The district will become mixed-use. The district will become more walkable, so that you can work and live in the same place, and not live in a single-family home, and then get in your car and drive to your commercial office building. Those are, that's where traffic starts in the first place. So I think it's really important to try and, you know, recognize those struggles with distinct neighborhoods and with traffic, and realize that making these steps to a specific plan and embracing the general plan that will help to, in the future, make a more walkable, more commutable districts where people will work, play, and live at the same time, instead of getting in a car and going from here to there. I think that, that just is really important. But continue, Troy. Thanks.
I think those were the main points, the, the notes that I took. There was another comment about requiring affordable housing for increased height. That gets a little, little tricky. I think that, that if we're talking about like an inclusionary housing, those need to be set up through a study. It's not like you can't do it, but it's, it's not like a, like a zoning code where you just increase the height and you adopt it. To set up inclusionary housing, it requires a study. So potentially, as an incentive, you could offer increased heights through, you know, affordability, but as a requirement, again, it's something to look into, but.
Why don't, why don't we bring up alternative two to talk about and look at? Because that, to understand kind of what is the, the delta between alternative one and alternative two before there's any affordable housing, and then the likelihood of the development community coming with affordable housing, even in alternative one or two, that's, that's gonna kind of give us that affordable percentage, whether it's codified or not, the development community's gonna bring that, because they're gonna want the development, the density bonus already.
Right. So here we have an example of, again, alternative one with the 56-foot height limit, and then alternative two, where it steps up from 56 feet near the residential area, then to 75 in what we're calling the core, and then ultimately 85 along the creek side. And as you mentioned, these would be the base densities potentially, which could be exceeded through density bonus for increased height.
And this is just a proposition at this point. I mean, alternative, there could be alternative 1.5, right? That depending on input be alternative 1.5, right? That depending on input from us, depending on input from the public, that says, okay, you know, 1A becomes, you know, a limit of 75 feet along Biona Creek and 65 feet, you know, in the core, or something like that, you know?
Right. So we did share this proposal with the community. We shared it with property owners, architects. Some of the feedback we had from some of those stakeholders, the development community, was supportive of the height increase, but also supportive of not transitioning, just going from 56 to the max height without the sort of stair-step approach. Another comment from the development community was also a focus on parking, making sure that they have adequate parking for all of the new development, whether it be residential or commercial. You know, it was a common comment from the development community.
I want to look at the rest of the commission. I've been talking a lot because I've been kind of on a roll here, but I would love to hear from, from everybody else. This is a good place to kind of focus some other discussion.
Yeah. So I, I was thinking on this point in particular that, what's the, what's the base density in this zone?
65 units per acre.
Okay. That, I, I think on some of these lots, like, an average parcel size, 65 dwelling units per acre would get you like 35 units, maybe. And I don't think, so assuming you're not including any affordable housing, I don't think you're gonna get, maybe you get two 56 feet with that many units. Like, I think that with the base density, if they're gonna go to 75 feet, if they're gonna go to 85 feet, there probably is going to be affordable housing included because they're gonna need to get above 65 dwelling units per acre. I'm not saying that's true necessarily. That's kind of my gut. I don't know if we can, as part of this study, look at that. Because, I mean, I, I take your point about to require inclusionary affordable units to get these, these heights would, would require us to do like a Nexus study or something. But it may, to me, it may not be something to worry about because any residential development, I think, would have to include affordable units to get more density in order to even hit, you know, build more floors. I feel like it's, it's not gonna be, a development's not gonna build more floors just for the sake of it. They're only gonna do it if they're gonna be able to put units on those floors, right?
Has there been any specific outreach to the development community, either from staff or from AECOM, on kind of where they think they would need to go relative to what he's talking about?
We did have two different stakeholder outreach meetings, one with architects and another one with like property owners and developers. And the feedback we received was, again, encouraging us to not stair-step and just go to the maximum 85 feet. And they, you know, also the feedback was to increase density for residential in this area.
Because they don't feel like they'd be able to make a project happen without the density?
For these heights, they were saying that the higher density would be appropriate.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I would be interested in that, too. I, it seemed like that question wasn't really teed up for us. And that, you know, obviously, we just voted on what the density for this zone should be. But the other thing that, the thing that I would worry about more, I think especially if we're concerned about affordable, is that if, if, you know, the value of these parcels is based on what could potentially be built there, and the density isn't high enough to build an 85-foot mixed-use building, that the most valuable use would be an 85-foot office building without any housing. And I, if, if what happens, if all of those dark blue buildings are just office buildings that could have been housing, then that's what I would be concerned about. And I wonder if, you know...
If you think about, we, there's the, the project that came before us, I think before you were here, that is in the, in the Hayden Tract, you know, entitled, blah, blah, blah. And they haven't moved forward because I don't think that there's a market for that.
Okay. I think it was actually one of my first projects, maybe.
Oh, was it? That, okay, okay.
But, but that's how long ago it was, almost, you know, three years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I would, I would be interested in saying, if it's gonna be taller than what's there now, it's gotta have, it's gotta have housing. You know, not, not, not limit commercial, not make the current commercial there, you know, different than what we're gonna allow in the future. But if you're gonna build taller than 43 feet or whatever the old zone, I mean, I, that, I'm not married to that number, but I, I would be interested in exploring that issue is like, if we're gonna increase the height in this, in this area, it seems like neighbors sound supportive of housing, cautious about, about height, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be housing if it's gonna, if it's gonna be, be taller. I would be interested in something like that. But I think that if, if it's only, you know, residential buildings that are gonna be 56 feet or higher, then I would bet that they're gonna need to get a higher density, and so therefore they're gonna have to include affordable. I'm, so I'm, I'm less concerned about that. And, and I, and I support, I think I support alternative two in that case, as long as, you know, again, those, those blue buildings are not commercial. Maybe there's not gonna be a market for it, but we do, we do get a lot of still commercial projects here, right?
I know Commissioner Carter, that's a big concern of yours as well.
Yes, absolutely. And, and I was, I'll, I'll let Stephen finish.
No, just like, related to that.
Yeah. I think, and I think that we should tie the height increase to affordable housing. I think that makes sense. Because I don't see, if you build a larger office building, that's 100% more traffic. If you build housing, you're hoping that people can walk to work and you're eliminating traffic. That's the hope. So, yeah.
Yeah. We've got this, you know, we've got a transit stop at either end of this district. I ju, I, like, I have a bunch of notes about this because I just rode my bike through there. I went to an event downtown yesterday. I got off the train with my bike at Los Yenegas Station and rode through Hayden Tract. And the connection to the bike path and mobility needs work. I got up on the sidewalk and almost ran into one of those transmission line poles, you know? And I was like, oh, my God, you know? So that, like, that's part of my notes for more. But continue. Sorry.
Yeah. Just on, on the height, I mean, just to state clearly, kind of what I was thinking is, is that the 56 feet, the 75 feet, the 85 feet are only available if, if there's some, if you're building some minimum density of housing. I think is, something like that would, to me, would be workable and would, and would solve that problem. I hate to think that we're opening up this height, and then the result of it is that less housing is built as a result. That's, that's the problem I would, I would be concerned about. But on height, if that's what we're focusing on right now, that's maybe the last thing I'd say.
Is that, is that difficult to codify? That, sorry to put you on the spot, but from the looks of your face, it's probably difficult.
It would be, it would be a general plan amendment if we're gonna increase the density beyond the 65, which may or may not have implications on, you know, the EIR that we just adopted, the environmental study for the area. So it's, it's something we could look into.
To be clear, I'm not, I'm not suggesting increase the, the density. I'm, I'm saying if, if you're building above 56 feet, then there's a minimum residential density. I guess, I, maybe, maybe, maybe that, maybe you're saying that's an increase in density, so it would, it would require an amendment, maybe.
I'm not, I didn't follow. I'm sorry.
So if, so if a building is 57 feet, it would need at least, say, 65 dwelling units per acre. Or you couldn't build a 57-foot building. So it's, you couldn't, you couldn't build an office building. You couldn't build an office building with three units or whatever.
We already do have minimum densities established in the higher-density districts, and they kick in at a lower. So if you're in one of these mixed-use, just going off of memory here, I think you, if you're gonna build residential, it has to be at a minimum, I believe, of like 30 units per acre. So we already have that.
But he's saying if, if it's not if.
I'm saying, if it's, if it's commercial, you can't build 57, is what I, is what I'm suggesting.
Right.
Yeah. And that's all, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Van Galen?
I like alternative two. I think the added height adds a lot to the proposed potential to this site. I, too, am concerned about affordable housing. I don't qualify for it, and I don't qualify for market rate when these come to be. So I'm kind of stuck in the middle. I won't be able to afford to move here either way. But regardless, I think we need more housing everywhere, including here.
I think, you know, the feedback to staff and the consultant is to really understand the market on what would be built in alternative two. Like, we don't want to see an 85-foot commercial office building. I don't, I don't think it'll be built. But like, it would be great to have more data than our kind of gut reaction on that.
I just want to add.
No, you're, the red, there you go.
I like, I think the cul-de-sac idea is interesting. I mean, that road, I do see where it connects to the freeway, and maybe if it was a cul-de-sac, there could be a way for bikes and pedestrians to get through and encourage more of that transportation.
How, how different is a cul-de-sac than the diverter that's there now?
During our talks, Commissioner Carter, we actually heard that comment from, I can't remember if it was the, the neighborhood or the development community, but they, they highlighted what you just said, the potential of having a, kind of a porous cul-de-sac where the vehicles can't get through. Maybe there's bollards or something else, planters, but pedestrians and, and bike traffic could, could travel through. So.
Similar to over by, you know, the Fox Hills Mall along, what is that, Playa? There's a few of those streets that have planters that keep you from going through, but you can walk and take my bike through. I've gone through there on my bike. Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, with your direction, that's something we could explore, too.
A snicket.
A snicket?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like on Faragut.
Okay. Yeah. So it'd be great to look into that further, I think.
Yeah. On the, on the cul-de-sac issue, I guess I'd be interested to see what the, what Public Works is finding in its studies because it's, to me, it's, it's pretty concerning if it's, if the cut-through is still a huge problem even with the diverter there. Like, it would, it would seem to me that the diverter, and maybe, and probably that's what everyone thought, the diverter should, should fix the problem. And if it's not, then what's it gonna be like with so many more people coming in and out? I mean, if it's people, well, I was gonna say, if it's people that, that live in the Hayden Tract, that's not, that's not exactly cut through, maybe. Or if their destination is the Hayden Tract, it's not exactly cut through. But it still is, it, it seems like the problem would be significantly increased with an influx of more people. And...
I'm not sure. I mean, and I, I know more people will mean more traffic, but I think that honestly, I, and I've been, I've done this myself, ways and other things will take me up Lucerne to Higera, quick right, quick left, and then on Helms to National to take me on Washington to go to Bar and Garden to pick up a bottle of wine, right? And like, that, I think that's where it's coming from. It's not, no one's going through the diverter. People find themselves on Higera because they're going back and forth.
Well, I mean, it will be interesting to see if, if, if what's being done for the traffic in the area can figure out that kind of thing. But I, I think it's, I do think it's something we should be looking at. I guess I don't see, I don't see the downside of a cul-de-sac, but I have a certain perspective on this. I get, I think that, you know, if you want, if you want the people who move there and the people who work there to rely on transit and biking, then a cul-de-sac is a great incentive.
You could take, you could take it a step further. The, the fact that some of the feedback is we want to embrace the connection to Biona Creek, the bridge across Biona Creek could become a parklet. It's a, you know, it's not vehicular traffic. It's an amenity for pedestrians that are both participating in the Hayden Tract and then filtering onto the bike path, or to Baldwin Hills, to the steps and things like that.
Yeah. To add to that, sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
I would like to see an initiative to connect the Lucerne-Higera neighborhood and the Hayden Tract better to both the Biona Creek bike path and the Baldwin Hills Scenic Overlook. It's right there, but to get there, it's impossible, especially if you're a kid on a bike. There's no safe way to get that thousand feet. It's in your neighborhood, but impossibly far away. And I think to go with that cul-de-sac, if we can ensure a safe connection, a safe, easy, and reliable connection that's walkable between these areas, I, I think that'd be benefit to all.
Yeah. I would piggyback on that, and I think, you know, to an extent, it's out of the scope of this plan, but I kind of think it should be in the scope of everything that's even adjacent to it because it's so important, is a connect, specifically a connection, I mean, more crossings on the, on the creek, really, for, for pedestrians and bikes. But I think this spot, at the Hayden Tract, where it would meet like a Baldwin Hills Scenic Overlook, I think especially because I think the city owns property there. And I know it's got, obviously, it's in use. But I'm thinking, like, if we're, if we're thinking long-term plans, like...
That whole section of the Biona Creek path is a desert through there. Like, I've ridden, I, I hate riding through there because, you know, you, at one end of it, it's Duquesne, like, you're stuck. It's Duquesne all the way to National, and there's no way on or off in between. And it's a, it's a really uncomfortable section of the bike path.
Yeah. And, and, and if we're, my family and I will, will bike that, and we want to get to Baldwin Hills Scenic Overlook, and you gotta go on Jefferson, and we just take the sidewalk because it's so scary. And, and if, and if there was a connection right there, that, I think that would be a, a big deal. And again, I'm like, I'm like looking for opportunities because, because the city does own, own some land around there on, on the south side of the creek. Maybe, maybe there's something to that. But however that can be part of this plan, looking towards some kind of crossing of the creek, not just more connections to the path, I think, that, I think, again, anywhere we're talking about this, we should be, also be talking about, can we, can we be, be crossing the creek more? I know it's hard to do.
In a pedestrian and bike way, not a vehicular way.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, exactly.
Right.
If, if we're on mobility, I, I have other mobility comments, but...
Yeah. No, let's go.
I think that's good. Let's, let's talk about mobility. Yeah.
I noticed, and I don't know if this was, if I was just misunderstanding, in the staff report, it talked about Stellar and Warner being streets that would have shared, shared lanes for cars, bikes, and pedestrians. And I don't know if that was a reference to the fact that they're, they don't have sidewalks.
It, it's one of the concepts that we're looking into, and maybe Susan could speak to it more. I think this might have been one of the things that AECOM brought up as an option. But it's, you know, when we're talking about different ways to redesign the roadway, I think this is a concept where it's more of a, kind of a free, open, all uses. But do you have anything to?
Yeah. It seemed worth exploring a potential shared street environment, if you're familiar with those. So typically, streets that don't have, you know, raised curbs, but share all the modes kind of equally. So cars are allowed. It's particularly helpful for loading, for example, or access when you need to have vehicular access to certain parcels. But they need to maneuver amongst people walking or people cycling. Much more common in Europe, but there's definitely examples. I worked on one in New York. It's, it does get implemented. There's some in Seattle. So if we're trying to think outside the box, it might be something worth exploring in the Hayden Tract. So if we're trying to think outside the box, it might be something worth exploring in the Hayden Tract.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I'm, what I was picturing when I was reading it is like a really dangerous street for pedestrians, but that doesn't sound like what you're saying. And I'm, and I'm wondering if I, this is, maybe this isn't for tonight, but I wonder if you have some visuals or examples that we could look at in the future to understand that idea better? Because I was like bristling at.
It's not Bourbon Street.
Right?
Yeah, it's, well, if you look up Wunorf, then that's kind of the best example, but it's a little different because they tend to be more implemented in Europe. They tend to be a little bit more residentially oriented areas. But it can definitely be implement, the one in New York was implemented on Willoughby Street in Brooklyn. There is literally an NYU campus with loading docks, you know, kind of similar to Hayden Tract where there's a lot of kind of functional logistics needs. But then it was adjacent to the Fulton Street Mall area where there's retail and then there's, you know, it's New York, there's residential. So it can be executed in kind of more chaotic environments as well. But you do tend to, you know, drive up, you know, so that you're at the curb level. And so you kind of know that you're entering a different world, so to speak. There are often bollards along both sides that kind of emulate where a curb would be, but people are still welcome to, you know, walk in the center of the street. But there are successful implementations and I'm happy to, you know, share them with you via Troy.
That sounds, that sounds great. I love that idea. And, and yeah, thinking outside the box like that, I think is necessary. Because when I, when I, when I pulled up the, you know, street view on the, on those streets, there's, yeah, there's like no sidewalk. Or there is, but there's, it's the, it's the, I thought, I thought I'd seen the narrowest sidewalks in Hayden Tract, but those streets are just, yeah, difficult to walk on right now. I also, on, on kind of a similar subject, between Stellar and Warner, there's this narrow parcel that's like an alley, but it's, it is a parcel of land. I don't know if, I don't know if, who owns it or what the deal is with that. Do you know about that?
Yeah, that's an old rail spur.
Okay.
And I'd have to talk with some folks and find out the history. From what I can recall, I have the feeling that the city did own it or worked in partnership with, with the neighboring properties to, to, it's integrated into part of the parking lot that goes between in that alley and then also kind of spurring up and out. But that was something that we identified as something to look into further. We, again, we don't know exactly the, the parameters of what, who owns it and what we could do.
Right. Because it, I mean, it occurs to me, it could be an opportunity for parkland.
Linear park.
Or something. But I just saw that, like, very strange that's there and you can kind of see the outline of a rail spur, I guess it is, as you look at the, the parcel map.
There was a previous vision done to make it a linear park, but then I think it's being leased for parking purposes. So it hasn't been implemented now, but it came up in our conversation with the architects.
Cool. Because yeah, because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of it as like, it's a parcel that will never be anything but a parking lot. I mean, like, they're not gonna build something on that, right? Because it's, it's too weird, but, but it could, it could be a park or so, or something. Even if it's not feasible now, again, maybe we can plan for something in the future if an opportunity comes up.
I have one actually comment on something that you made before, if I may, that might help with feedback related to the conversation about height. Because you, you raised a very good point that certainly if you're at sixty-five Ds per acre, you know, getting, getting to, say, eighty-five feet is more challenging if it's a residential-only building. But a couple of things that we're going to be thinking about as part of this project is, obviously it's an existing, you know, commercial area. If you allow more height, it can encourage mixed-use buildings. So if you're trying to kind of keep that commercial vibe, so to speak, but still allow, you know, a good amount of residential, one way to do that is to allow more height. So it might encourage a developer to still put commercial within the property while being able to still get the density. So that's one thing that I think we'll be thinking about. The other thing is, in some cases, you could see a developer building much larger unit sizes. So, you know, to hit that density, obviously, if you're gonna get that tall, you can really only do that with three or four-bedroom units. But it is something that has been talked about a lot in the planning community about this kind of, you know, missing middle housing typically gets associated with lower types of typologies. But thinking about it within a taller building, you're looking for a three-bedroom with your family, a four-bedroom with your family. It's really hard to find that, you know, you can't afford, afford it as a single-family homeowner. But if developers are kind of encouraged to eat up their height, so to speak, and they can still make some money because they're doing four-bedroom units, that's something that, you know, that we can think about or have as part of the discussion. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
I think that's fascinating. Yeah, the lower density, larger unit at that point. Yeah.
That's all I have on mobility.
Okay. Commissioners on?
No, that's it for me.
I just want to reiterate my statement about the bike path and, or just getting from here to there on a, the, getting onto the bike path on National in the stretch between Jefferson and all the way to Washington. You're stuck on it, right? There's no way on or off of it in between. So I find myself on National Boulevard with cars bearing down on me. And you, there is no sidewalk to retreat to. The, you know, west, the southwest side of National has huge power poles that eat up the sidewalk that even me on, who can navigate pretty well on my bike, can barely get past, right? So that is a big issue, I think. And I know that that's not kind of the, kind of across Hayden Tract, but if we're gonna be able to embrace the transit at either end of the district, we have to make it really easy to get to the, to the transit from within the district, right? And right now, it's not. Right now, you're kind of on the sidewalk along National and then you cross that wacko side, crosswalks and everything in front of the rapper, or on the other side, you're kind of, it's much better on the other side where the platform is. But still, like, you know, you're funneled into these very narrow, to get, to get to the platform side is the, is the sidewalk that's in front of the school there, and that's the one that's like, like, it's a, there's a huge power pole that takes up the entire sidewalk. So, and that's the only way to get there unless you went to Higera and came back around or something. I mean, it's really, so the pedestrian access and thoroughfares to get to those stations is a, I think, a very critical element to, to kind of embrace the transit. I was curious, though. So who does that? Who does those mobility improvements? Are we waiting for a property development to piece by piece fix the sidewalk on National? I, I, that's a big question and a big issue, I think.
Yeah, it depends on which, which avenue we take. There, there is one, you know, way of getting a wider sort of right-of-way where you, you establish that these are the road widths that we would, that we want and we feel are justified, be able to have a sidewalk next to this power lines, that you can actually get past it. And in those instances, you can require development to, to, to offer, you know, that five-foot buffer on the, as they redevelop. And so that's one, that's one option that we're, we're pursuing and looking into.
But like, the bottleneck is Turning Point. Turning Point's not gonna redevelop anytime soon. So that sidewalk, we have to fix as the city of Culver City, I think.
There's other options. There's undergrounding utility districts where you set up a district that sort of taxes the properties in that area to pay into a fund to underground the utilities. And it's a little bit of a longer process, but, you know, that's another option.
Those are big poles. Those are like medium voltage poles there. It's not small. I think it'd be really hard. I think that's a, like, that's a critical bottleneck in that one spot.
Cool. Any other specific feedback you want from us, Troy, in other categories?
No, this has been great. I've got, I've got a lot of notes here and I think we've gotten, you know, fairly clear direction on a number of these items, and so I think this is enough for us to, to move on and provide some of the recommendations and the things that we've heard when we, when we go to the city council later this month.
Okay. I think Commissioner Jones has something else to add.
Thanks. I have one more thing. I'll try to make it quick.
Wait, hit the button.
Sorry. Yeah, I turned it off. I'll try to make it quick. On open space and parks in particular, I think that I would love to see something creative. Like, because, I mean, the, the, again, like, so what I described about getting, getting across the creek, maybe is it self-creative to get, to get to scenic overlook? Say Cronenthal is also hard to get to.
It's the same issue with that bike path.
Exactly, yeah. And, and I was wondering if there's, if there's a way of, I mean, so that one opportunity tract of like a linear park is one idea. I was wondering if there's a way to encourage, like, park dedication instead of paying in lufies? Or, or instead of, you know, public, publicly accessible common open space? I mean, I like, I like all those things, but I'm, and if, and if this, if there was a good way to get a lot of publicly accessible open space that was really like, the example I always use, which is the, the, the park at the platform, I think is a really good private park that feels like a public park. So I, either something that encourages that, or I don't know if, if there's a way to say like, hey, you, you know, you don't have to pay an in-luf fee or you meet all your open space by dedicating some parkland. Something like that, something creative that because this area is, does not have a park and because it's, has just, you know, handful of parcels, might never have a park.
I think your rail spur is the perfect.
I, I love that idea. I mean, I like those opportunities, but they might not happen. So it'd be nice to have more opportunities, is, is my point. So that's all.
Could always cover Biona Creek and make it a park too, but that's a lot to ask for.
Anything else, Commissioner Van Galen? No? Commissioner Carter, before we close this item?
That's all.
Okay, great. I think with that, we can move on from A1. Great. Here comes Vice Chair Menthe back and Commissioner Van Galen? No, your, Commissioner Van Galen is also recused for A2 and we can bid you good evening, so you don't have to stay till the end, I think. Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to A2, which is a analogous exercise to what we just went through. Receipt and an update from Fox Hills specific plan for discussion and comment. If we could have a staff report again, thanks.
Reintroducing myself, Troy Evangelou, Advanced Planning Manager. I'd also like to introduce the consultant team that's helping us with the Fox Hills specific plan and that would be our, our consultants from Studio 111. In the audience here, we have Shruti and Jasmine, and then joining us online is Alan. And we're excited to share with you our progress on the initial development of our Fox Hills specific plan. Quickly, just to go over, similar to the last item we looked at, we're gonna discuss the reason for a specific plan in this neighborhood and sort of the, the timeline for moving forward. We're going to discuss the outreach that we've conducted so far and the feedback that we've heard. We're gonna talk again about the content of the plan and very similar to the Hayden Tract, there's three main components. Land use and zoning, roadways and mobility, and then parks and public amenities. Then we're gonna also talk about next steps for the project, and again, we have some questions to prompt you to get some of your feedback and direction. So why a specific plan? Again, in our general plan 2045, we've identified the Fox Hills neighborhood as a future study area. And the specific plan is our tool to help plan that transition from an office park to a higher-density mixed-use community. And also, this is a component of our housing elements, identifying sites in the Fox Hills area that are part of our regional housing needs assessment. And to prompt some questions for you to think about as we move through the presentation, again, focusing on those three main areas. First, mobility. One of the things you're gonna see is a proposal to break up these larger blocks with what we're calling paseos. And this would help with increased connectivity to all of the different priority locations, Fox Hills Park, the mall, the transit center. We're also going to look for feedback on park access and amenities. Things that we've been discussing with the community include improvements to the park, connections and trails to the park and potential for new park amenities, maybe a community center, something along those lines. And then lastly, revisiting the zoning and land use and looking at the question of the current densities. We've heard from the community through our outreach process, there is, you know, in, in residential components of the community, there's been expressed concern about the number of, of units coming in, the amount of density. We've also heard support for that as well, and so we're just raising the issue for, for this planning commission to give us their thoughts and their guidance on the densities in Fox Hills area. And with that, I would like to turn the presentation over to our consultant, Shruti.
Thank you, Troy. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Shruti Shankar from Studio 111. And as Troy mentioned, you know, there's a lot here that overlaps with some of what you heard from the Hayden Tract team, so I'll try to be brief on those, on those slides. But the Fox Hills planning area sits south of Slough Avenue between Sepulveda Boulevard on the west and the city boundary on the east. And the plan focuses on three primary goals. So we're looking at the need to deliver community benefits and better amenities as part of the specific plan, making the neighborhood more connected and cohesive, as well as improving walkability by breaking up large blocks and enhancing access. So these goals reflect community input as well, and they also align with the general plan update. So in terms of the timeline, we kicked off the specific plan in December 2024 and since then, we have been collecting data on the existing conditions as well as gathering early input from the community. We have this presentation for you today with some questions for direction. We'll be back at city council later this month as well. And then we're looking at the target adoption date for the plan in the spring of 2026. In terms of outreach, outreach so far, again, very similar to the Hayden Tract process. We've had a citywide survey. We've had a community open house, stakeholder calls. And in addition, we also had some flyering in person at Fox Hills Park and the Parquet to meet residents where they are and share some more information about the plan. We had over a hundred and sixty people that responded to the survey online and sixty-three people that participated both in-person and online at the community open house. So some images from the Fox Hills Community Open House, and this was a joint event with the Hayden Tract project. And similar to that effort, we do also have a virtual open house resource where all of this information continues to live online. So the specific plan will build on the general plan policies, but it will create a vision statement that's specific to the Fox Hills neighborhood and a regulating plan that identifies specific types of changes and improvements for the area as well as new policies and design standards that can implement those. And another way of looking at this, the neighborhood vision will sort of set the big picture and then it can get implemented through policies and standards written for buildings and land use, for mobility in streets and for parks and public amenities. policies and standards written for buildings and land use, for mobility in streets, and for parks and public amenities. So through the outreach, we asked the community about their priorities for Fox Hills to craft a neighborhood-specific vision as a starting point. And a lot of the community feedback has focused on a few primary themes. So protecting the character of the existing neighborhood, including the feeling of greenery and open space, was a theme that came up a lot. Making the area more walkable and more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, and also enhancing access to transit. And then another theme was adding more opportunities for local retail, especially restaurants, places to dine out, which don't really exist today, in the community, as well as preferences for more affordable housing. So the building, buildings and land use section will build on existing adopted plans like the general plan update, but also the zoning code and the objective design standards. But it will tailor them to Fox Hills and make, develop, develop and regulations that basically build on the vision and the character areas for the neighborhood. So the map to the right shows some early ideas in that direction, which were shared through the community outreach, contemplating ideas like, should there be special areas that require design guidelines that are tailored to help new development better meet the character of that area that we want, that we want to see? For example, near existing housing, do we want to see areas that have specific design regulations intended to make new development fit the scale of the neighborhood a little bit better? Or do we look at regulations for areas that want to feel more active or more like a main street, such as maybe Bristol Parkway, which was one of the areas pointed out in the general plan? So we shared a lot of those possibilities with the community, and feedback has been mixed on the, on the buildings and land use front, as Troy mentioned. Many residents do favor densities lower than what's in the general plan, especially near existing homes and near Fox Hills Park. And that is tied to concerns about overdevelopment, which were expressed as concerns related to traffic, related to parking, related to change in the community character, but also thoughts about pollution or the need for adequate infrastructure if all that density is coming in. There was also, there were also comments supporting higher densities or densities that are currently in the general plan. And oftentimes, they were associated with having that density in the office parks or in areas like Sepulveda Boulevard, Fox Hills Drive, and Bristol Parkway. We also generally heard favorable response for the densities from property owners who own larger parcels or developers. In terms of mobility and roadways, the mobility section will again build on ongoing planning efforts, which includes the safer Fox Hills Plan and other transit improvements that are being planned in the community. Another important focus for mobility from the general plan goals is to introduce new connections that create a more walkable neighborhood. And the map here to the right shows possibilities for locations of new pedestrian connections that could either be suggested or required through the specific plan to break down the large scale of the blocks that exist today, and provide ways for people to connect better on foot or by bike throughout the neighborhood compared to what there is today. This could also include better connections to the mall, as well as to the transit center. So in addition to general support for several of the Fox Hills initiatives, we did hear that at the community open house, you know, people like the ideas of the bike lanes and intersection improvements, but there was a lot of support for improved road safety in general and creating a better pedestrian experience. More landscape buffers, better transit access, and also getting creative with things like shared parking were some of the ideas that were expressed. The plan also looks at new park spaces like trails, but also upgrading existing parks and creating gathering areas for the neighborhood. The image here on the right again shows a conceptual idea, something that could be a possibility to create a neighborhood trail or an open space network that could provide a variety of benefits for both existing and future residents. And, you know, ideas like this, if they're desired and taken through, could be implemented through policies or frameworks in the specific plan. So as for community feedback, we heard really strong support for more and better parks, trails, green open spaces. Residents did want to see upgraded park amenities, more dog-friendly areas, we heard that a lot, and better pedestrian connections. And there's also interest in a community, community center, more schools or daycare facilities, and neighborhood plazas. Another important theme that came through in all of the conversations about open space and protecting community character was emphasizing the need to preserve existing mature trees that have large canopies and contribute in a large way to what the neighborhood feels like today. So as next steps, you know, we'll, we'll take a recommendation from Planning Commission today, we'll meet with council, and we'll be developing draft alternatives for the community to review in a workshop in the summer. So we're looking forward to your feedback today to help shape those options, and I'll turn it back to Troy to take us through that discussion.
Thank you, Shruti.
Thank you.
And again, ending on the slide with the different questions that we're looking for some guidance and feedback on.
Okay, great. Any, I'm sorry, any quick questions for staff before we hear from the public? Okay, let's go ahead and, Madam Clerk, do we have speakers registered?
We do have two speakers.
Okay, can we go ahead and give them three minutes?
Our speakers are... We have James Vitale and Jack Walter. Go ahead, James.
Hi, good evening, and thank you, members of the Planning Commission, for providing me the opportunity to offer feedback tonight. My name is James Vitale. I'm the Board President for the Camelot Condominium Owners Association here in Fox Hills. It's been very helpful seeing all of the thoughtful materials that have been put together for the presentation. I really do want to express a lot of appreciation to everyone who's participated in the design and planning process so far. I've been a resident of Fox Hills here at the Camelot for just over 20 years, and really haven't seen much change or significant development in our community during that time, so being, having the opportunity to participate in this revisioning of Fox Hills and the opportunities to create a more integrated community with a number of improved amenities and features sounds really, really wonderful. And I, I know that we're still in the early phases of this, and I just really want to express gratitude and appreciation to everybody for the clearly, clearly well-thought-out review and input process. There's obviously multiple opportunities being provided for community feedback, and there really seems to be a tremendous amount of hard work going into providing visibility and transparency to all the many different concerns that are going on here. So I just really wanted to come in tonight and express gratitude and appreciation for the work that's already been done, and look forward to being able to participate further in the community feedback process in the coming months. So thank you all very much, and look forward to the rest of the discussion tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Walter.
Good evening. Thank you. This is Jack Walter. I wanted to...
Can you please speak up a bit? We cannot hear you.
Can't hear me.
Make sure you have the right microphone selected on your end.
Okay, now?
No, we cannot hear you.
No, cannot hear me. What do I, well, if you're not hearing me, I don't know what to do. Let's see, is that thing to click?
Sorry, we're gonna have to skip over you. We cannot hear you. Yes, you can email our comments or send them through our, through our chat, but we, we cannot hear you. We're gonna have to skip over you.
You hear me now?
It's the same.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Hello?
No, we cannot.
That's unfortunate. Okay. That was our only other speaker. So... Sorry, that kind of threw me off. Do we want to start with any comments? We got to talk about mobility, park access, and density. If you want to pull up one of the plans, like the new connections plan really resonated with me personally, but something to look at. But we can begin with comments? There we go, yeah. Commissioner Carter?
Yes, I think the paseo idea, making this more walkable, is a, the best place to start. I'm really happy to hear it, and Fox Hills deserves it. I also like keeping the existing trees, and there's a lot that can be done here. I would say, I would like to give, say something about native plants, because if there is going to be more common area, I mean, I'm not saying change anything that's already there, but if there is going to be a large area created, more public space created, that this might be a good opportunity to bring in some native plants, because there's just so much concrete over there, like, it would bring back some nature, and I think that's what everyone is going for, and it's, it's, it looks good. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the pedestrian connection is a really important thing. I think, you know, the, the way that the streets move around in Fox Hills, if you want to get from here to there, the only way to get there is to drive around or something like that, right? The idea that some of the new housing development or getting from Fox Hills Park or from the residences, but, you know, to the southeast of Buckingham, if you want to get anywhere else, you have to get in a car and drive, you know, even to get to Fox Hills, because it's, you know, a kind of uninviting, long, big suburban street, along Green Valley Circle or something like that to get there, you know? I've, I used to work in Corporate Point and spent many, many weekends at Fox Hills Park for AYSO, both for kids playing and for refereeing, and you know, it's, it's a long walk from here to there. It doesn't seem like it. It's like one block from one intersection to the next, but there, it's a long desert of a walk from here to there, because there's nothing in between, right? And I think breaking it up with these smaller, whatever they are, pedestrian paths, or, you know, even when you're at Fox Hills, that, that connection that goes to the north, you know, it's like you're just right there, but there's a fence and a property, and you can't go anywhere, right? So looking for those connections, I think, from, you know, on the mobility piece, I think is really important. Yeah.
So, you know, I'm really excited about Fox Hills. It is exciting to see this just as a neighborhood, you know, that, I think part of what, what the chair was talking about, in my view, you know, you have a, a neighborhood that was built a number of years ago, where on the residential side, certainly, it was built to have isolated spaces that were walled off from each other. This was, this was the view, right, that, that streets were dangerous places to be avoided and to be screened off from, and each of these condominium complexes, and frankly, a lot of the office buildings were built to be these little havens from the road. And our task is really to turn that completely around and make these roads the central focus of what people want to be on. So that's a challenge. I'm a little curious at what's, what's envisioned in these connections. I mean, I get the ideas are conceptual, there's connections, but, you know, what does this look like? When you say trails or paths, are these paved? Do they have, are there, I would hope they have at least a surface that's bikeable, right? I don't know how wide they are. I can't quite tell by looking at this. And I don't know if there's been discussion about that. I'd love to hear that in just a second, but just sort of before we get there, the reason I say I'm excited about it is like, I feel like this is the part of city, the part of Culver City that can be the walkable, bikeable place that everyone likes to talk about, because this is a place where you can actually have the density that can support a walkable, bikeable town with ground-level retail and all of that. And there's a lot of Culver City that is not dense enough to easily support that. Here, you can do that. And I, and we've seen building after building come through here with that as the vision.
I think that's the missing piece, is that, is that walkable amenity, is that ground-floor retail, and, you know, it, you, it, right now, it's only a bedroom, right? Like, it's, it's, it's a residential community with nothing else other than Fox Hills Park.
If I could ask, is there a, a thought of what these connections look like yet? Like, how far developed is that?
We didn't bring any examples as part of this presentation, but we do, if you would go to the, if you had a chance to check out the virtual open house, where we have sample boards, so we do show examples, just photo examples from other communities that have these sort of pass-through paseos. In some versions, they're just pedestrian-oriented. In some versions, they're pedestrian and bike. And so right now, we're just at the conceptual phase. We haven't got into, you know, specific widths or types of amenities and those types of things.
Could pedestrian bridges, bridges be a part of that, or is that just always going to be out of budget?
To cross streets?
To cross, so if someone wanted to walk to the mall? To what, like, cross over?
I think Fox Hills Drive has a pedestrian connection to the mall. You just have to get to Fox Hills Drive.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the parking structure, for lack of a better vehicle, connects the top deck of the mall to Fox Hills Drive. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was curious, you know, Vice Chair Menthe brought up, you know, the road safety, and that was something that Shruti, you mentioned was a feedback from the community, you know, is there safety issues with the streets that are there now? Is it, is, is it just, I don't want to say just, is it, is it the issue of, you know, young families in the, in the condo buildings southwest of Buckingham to get to Fox Hills Park, crossing Buckingham? I know Buckingham is, like, can be brutal, like, people go fast, and everybody's looking for a place to park and everything on there. Is that, is that kind of the core of the issue, or is it go beyond that? That's my, kind of myopic visibility to it.
Yeah, I, I think the narrative feedback on the safety issues were kind of a reframing of the cut-through traffic idea. So lots of people use Green Valley, they use Buckingham as ways to kind of avoid some of the big arterials, and they do it at maybe higher speeds that then would be preferable in the neighborhood. And so most of the safety comments were more so focused on that theme.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I forgot how Slosson is kind of an extension of the freeway essentially to get from 405 up into Ladera Heights and everything there. Okay. Continue. Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Sure. I, I wanted to ask, are these as laid out, consistent with some of the proposed developments that we've seen? So I'm like thinking about like Hanum and Buckingham, for instance, there's a proposed development there. And you have this paseo along the top.
So, the closest comparison, I would say, is the project for 5757 Uplander, which does have a very similar north-south connection, and also potentially through east-west connections. So, for that particular project, they have incorporated some of this connectivity in, in their own way, right? They have it with pedestrian bridges that kind of connect over, and it's elevated off of the street level. So, they have their own, you know, proposal and design to it, but that's the closest one I've seen to, you know, anything that would achieve what is being demonstrated here.
I, I, I love the idea of requiring these. I mean, I don't know exactly, and we'd have to get it right, right? If we're gonna require them, but I feel like this you know, all these areas that right now, I mean, I'm thinking about, I was thinking about this on the density question, but it's so applicable here, is that like the, the best park in the city, and so much of it is just those office parks. And then, we're gonna, if those are gonna be redeveloped, and we can't, we can't have these connections, I mean, I'm thinking about someone who lives on the southeast side of Buckingham, and they wanna get to the transit center, and you see exactly how they'd do it. Right? I mean, if they're gonna bike, or if they're gonna, or if they're gonna walk, I mean, it's a long walk, but...
Even, even with that, you know, that curved piece of the paseo that goes in front of the mall, that's a pretty bleak road that goes underneath the Marina Freeway there, it's like, that, we're not obviously gonna do anything with the freeway, but it, it, like, if there's a way to try to make that a more inviting path. Yeah.
And I, and I think, you know, I mean, a lot of the talk about how to connect transit to Fox Hills is like, you know, run a circulator that goes to Transit Center, run a circulator that goes to
I think that's a
which is a great idea, but there's, there's ways for people to get there without doing that, if you have, I mean, let's do that too, but I think that this, this, you, you need to give people more options, and this is, is gonna do that, because there are people, I don't know, I think, like, if, if, if all this gets built, let's say, 25% of the people that are biking on one of those paths would never bike on a street, even if you made it really safe. But people, but they will bike on, on a path like that. Or, or there will, there will people who will walk 20 minutes, you know, to, to get to the Transit Center too. Or, you know, if you've got, if you've got the circulator just running on Bristol, let's say, the people that live on Buckingham would never cross, would never go, walk all the way around to get there, you know. So, like, this opens up a lot of opportunities, and I think if you, if you do it with not just thinking about connecting the density, and I'm like noticing that, like, the folks that live between Green Valley and Doverwood don't get a little spur of the, of that, that lowest paseo. But if you, if you think about how it's connecting the density to, to not just the, the Main Street, which I love that idea as well, but, but transit as well, you know, if there, if there is gonna be a circulator, I mean, right now, there are buses that go on, on some of these other roads that don't go, don't just go to the Transit Center.
What, what about the idea of moving the Transit Center? Like, the Transit Center right now is, is way over there, and like, a big issue is the fact that you're always, like, you're getting there.
Yeah.
What if it was, you know, on the corner of Bristol and Green Valley Circle, instead of Supulvedance Slauson?
And it is, it is where it is because of where the roads are, not where, because of where the people are, right?
Right.
And
Like, what if we brought it closer to where the people wanna be, you know, if?
I, I mean, I, I mean, it's kind of not exactly what we're talking about here.
I know, but I mean, that's kind of like, we're trying to solve a symptom instead of the problem.
No, no, I, I agree with you, I just wanted to, like, discount my remark, which is that I think that it's hard, it's hard, it's hard for buses to get in and out of small residential roads, and
Those are not small roads, though, like Bristol and Green Valley.
They might become small roads.
Yeah, that's, I suppose. But I think it's worth some idea of, maybe there's a, maybe there's an option that, even if it doesn't move the Transit Center, but it's, it's somewhere in between a circulator and moving the Transit Center, that there's, you know, the, the Culver City bus in, takes a different route that takes it through
Yeah.
you know, Fox Hills, and still goes to the Transit Center, you know, or something, something like that.
Is, is there any conversation between this process and the city's comprehensive transportation, something, something, that's happening right now?
So, yeah, we, we've been reaching out and, and talking with our Transportation Department throughout this process on both projects, this one as well. We have talked about the Transit Center, different options for the Transit Center, and whether or not there could be as Chair Rowman said, different, different locations for, for new transit options. So, we, we have been engaged with them throughout this process. It hasn't been directly tied to their newest effort, but they are involved with this.
'Cause I know, 'cause I've been, I've been to those open houses too, and it's like connections to Fox Hills is a big topic. It's one of the most important things they're looking at, I think. And, yeah, and I think that that is an important part of the process, because that Transit Center, most of the transit that goes through there is Metro buses.
Right, not the big green limousine.
Right, right. It's like, we have one, like, one bus, and it's not even like, two, the two of the buses that go on Supulvedance, and only one of them goes in there.
Yeah.
But, but I, but I think that's a great, I mean, it's definitely something that, that we should be looking at.
Yeah. One thing you touched on, you know, one of the best parks in Culver City, Fox Hills Park.
I said the best.
You said the best. So, if we switch gears and talk about the park a little bit, I assume that, you know, looking at this process has a close integration with the park's planning process. You know, part, I, from, not, I'm not a resident of Fox Hills neighborhood, but like I said, my working there and frequenting that park for years, you know, a big issue is parking, right? And I know that the parking is an issue for the residents, but also for, you know, visitors to the park, you know, not being the community members going to the park, but you know, AYSO, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, it's not just the people that live in the community there that wanna go to that park, and they have, you know, we, when I worked there, we used to go there to play soccer, you know, on a Friday afternoon, and stuff like that. I, you know, as much as cars and traffic are not great, having better parking for the park, I, I think is an important thing, because a lot of people to get to that park have to take their car, and I think that part of the issue is, you know, that trip into the neighborhood as a visitor is a burden to the residents of the neighborhood, and I think that that's part of I mean, I'm totally projecting here, but I, I feel like part of the kind of the struggle of the Fox Hills neighborhood resident is that there's a lot of me, visitors to the neighborhood, that cause a lot of the parking issues, and a lot of those things, and I think trying to fix that for the neighborhood, I think is really important. For, for that, you know, for that specific plan, you know, there's a lot of those commercial properties that could be parking with more courts on top of a parking structure, or something that added to the park, but also added parking to the to the, to the district, you know. The reason why Vets Park works, there's lots of parking for it, you know, Limburg Park is small, but there's plenty of perimeter parking for it, you know, tho, those kind of things, you know, Billbots, there's parking for it.
If I could, though, I mean, just, you said about Vets Park, actually, in my opinion, Vets Park doesn't have parking. Right? It has that one little strip of parking.
There's a lot of spots there, that goes all the way down to the, to Alenda.
It's, it's pretty limited. I mean, I think that what makes Vets Park work, for better or worse, is that people park in the neighborhood. And the neighborhood is very gritty and easy to get to. And one of the things I'm happy about seeing here is that I think part of the problem with Fox Hills Park is it's so forbidding to get to with the way these streets are, that everybody wants to park in that one same place.
Yeah.
And this will make people more willing, if we have these other connections, to park, you know, up on
Oh, that's a great point, yeah.
somewhere around there, not all have to be at that corner of Buckingham and Green Valley, which is the way you're supposed to get.
No, no, you're, absolutely, yeah.
So, I think that that will help, but I, I definitely do hear you that there's, there is a need, especially if we do talk about a community center on another slide, there's a need to have some spaces of parking there, just to deal with the fact that otherwise, people are not gonna get around the city to get there.
No, that, that's an excellent point. I didn't think about that at all. Those pedestrian connections to Bristol, to Uplander, you know, on the weekend, especially when it's, when the businesses are not there, and there's parking on those streets that people can go there, and then walk into the park from the other direction.
I, I do like the
Wait.
I just did that thing again. I do like the shared parking, I don't know exactly what you have in mind for that, but I think that, you know, an area that actually, I think, I think we've talked about this before in the, in terms of the Hayden Tract, but here, as the Chair just alluded to, there's a lot of commercial parking structures that are are vacant a lot of the time. And I think that if we have mixed uses in a neighborhood, and we have a lot of parking spaces there, and a lot of parking spaces that are gonna be built, it's not in the city's interest to have a bunch of parking spaces that are empty, and could, could be, could be used instead of building more, in, in my view. And that, finding, finding creative ways, and I don't know if, if I don't know if there are ways that have already been developed to, to do this in a, in a way that actually works, and actually does what we're, what we're trying to do, but to I, the reason I, the reason I, I think, I think of this in terms of the Hayden Tract is because the company I work for, when they were at a a building adjacent to the Hayden Tract, every year would rent parking at a different building, you know, whatever building gave them the cheapest parking in the Hayden Tract, that was where they rented the parking. And it was like, we were always parking in a different company's building every single year, and it was a great deal for our company, it was a great deal for the company that, you know, had this parking that they weren't using. And I wonder if there's a version of that that the city can help with, and, and I'd be interested to hear what you've seen done before, and what, what could maybe be done here with that.
I just wanted to return to this slide, 'cause we did have some prompts about different, you know, questions, and I think we covered a lot of it as far as mobility, improvements to the park, and new amenities for the park. I wanted to circle back to the question on density. Like I mentioned, there's been discussions on both sides from community members about too much development, reducing density, and there's also been interest in keeping that same density. So, again, just wanted to see if there was any direction on this.
Density? Commissioners?
I, I'll just say quickly that I think it makes sense to have density around the park. I think if Bristol's gonna be a Main Street, it makes sense to have density around, along Bristol. I don't wanna, I don't wanna give up on Slauson as a, as a potential really nice place to live. I mean, a lot of people are gonna live along Slauson, as you can see there. But right now, that's, that's not what it is. I don't, I don't necessarily think it should be lower than the rest of Fox Hills, but I definitely don't think that, one of the things I've heard proposed is swapping it, so that the higher density is along Slauson. I, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. Yeah.
I think it can work if we commit to these walkways.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Isolating those isolating those residences, you ju, you just funnel everybody onto the same clogged arteries that are there now, but having the ability to you know, move residences, pedestrians, bikes, to to get to, hopefully, a new set of shared amenities that are coming, that are along different pathways. It, there's just so, there's so much you know, land opportunity when you move away from Buckingham, over to Bristol, and all that stuff, and the idea that these huge surface lots can't become things that have more ground-floor retail, and places where people wanna go right there in the neighborhood, instead of you know, oh, I wanna go to a nice restaurant, I have to get in my car and drive to downtown Culver City, you know? I, i, if you had that opportunity that showed up on, on Bristol. Yeah.
You know, I, I think density can be deceptive to people. I think that, you know, you can build 65 units an acre that feels like a wall of fortresses, you can build 100 units an acre that feels cozy. It depends a lot on what it's gonna look like, and I think I understand residents there are leery about the number of units, just the sheer number, because they're worried at just the sheer number leading to traffic, and that's, that's one question to just bracket, like, the sheer number of units. But, leaving that aside, I think we can easily get hung up on whether it's 65 or 100, or whatever the density is. The question, does it work, right? Does it work? Do we have the pedestrian connections? Do we have the look and feel of the space? Because some of the most beloved places on our planet are very dense. You know, that's, that's fine, it works, and also some of the ugliest, right? I mean, it just depends what we end up doing with it. When we look at these design standards, we don't want anything uniform, we don't want we don't want Playa Vista, sorry, I don't mean to say that, we don't want that, we want something that has this organic feel. If you're, if you're committed to doing that, and I think, I suspect everyone up here is, the higher density is gonna work fine, and it's also gonna get you that trade-off that you need, which is to support the businesses that everyone says they want on the ground level. It needs a certain number of human beings to do that, and if you don't have the human beings to support it, they're only gonna be able to get there by car, and then you've got to build a city that has enough parking for them. That's, that's, that's what the trade-off looks like. So, if we're committed to, to trying to make this work as a walkable place, you've gotta have the density. I do understand the fear about the sheer number of units, I get that that's something that, that frightens people, I I think we do need to think about how we are getting people efficiently in cars out of there, when that needs to happen. So, we wanna make sure that when we're talking about these paseos and these road safety measures, we don't end up creating, you know, seven stoplights between here and there, and then, then, then we've, then we've actually made a problem. But, you know, I'm looking at this map, and I see the 90 and the 405, and if I'm car-dependent, I can get out fairly quickly onto major arteries. That's, that's, that is one of the great things about Fox Hills. That's something, I mean, I wasn't here for the Hader Tract, wasn't allowed to talk about it, but I can tell you, that's a big difference between these two spaces. Right? Is the access that you have, if you're a car, to get out. So, I, you know, city council may have other ideas as to what it wants to do, and I understand that they're gonna respond to the residents, and I hear that. But, you know, as for me, I'm, I'm much more interested in, in what we see, and I've been pleased with the plans that we've seen, the buildings that we've seen coming to us, that have had, whether it's one that already has paseo built in, that you were mentioning, Troy, or others that are, they're stepped back, they're, they've got the ground-floor amenities, they're all, they're, they're looking at that Main Street vision. And I, I, you know, if, if I had the money to invest in another place, I'd be recusing from both of these, because I would want I would want to, to go invest in Fox Hills in the next 10 years, I really would.
I think that, I really appreciate in the outreach and on the virtual what's it called? The, the virtual open house, thank you. That there is quite a bit of prompt there on what it looks like. The, the breaking up of the facade, the step backs, like, I think it's really important for the public to, to see that in a, in a rendering, in a visual, to understand that, you know, hey, this you know, hey, this 100 unit per acre from a street presence can look like this. And I think that that's, to, to your point, very important to, to understand that, you know, the density is possible here because of the availability, and that we just want to, we want it to be done right. We want it to be done in a way that is, you know, pleasing to the community, makes that, that pedestrian thoroughfare a pleasant place to walk down, and you're not just standing on the wall of a canyon as you walk. I think that's really important, and I, you know, look forward to more feedback from the public when they look at more of that virtual open house material.
I have just, just one more thing.
Do it, yeah.
Just, because I said this offhandedly, but I want to say it again, is that I don't, I don't want to give up on Slauson, and I don't think that you, I've seen that you have. But I just, when I look at the paseos, there's no connections to Slauson, maybe that makes sense. But I just want to plant that seed. I, I would love to see what your ideas are for Slauson, or how that, how that fits into all this. Because I, I like the idea of it being a better street to live next to, because a lot of people are still going to live next to it. I mean, maybe you already have those ideas, but anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think that's one of those situations where you really have to look at that street frontage and have that buffer zone from the, from the vehicular traffic. But you're right, there's a lot of opportunity, it's wide already, and you can have some, you know, shield against the traffic and still have a pleasant...
Yeah.
... paseo or a pleasant, you know, walk-up front that, you know, the, the view that direction, if you're not right on the sidewalk, can be great.
One of the things about Playa Vista that I, that I don't like is that they gave up on Jefferson, I guess for like, as a pedestrian, right? You, if you're, it's not, I mean, it's a better street to walk on than National, maybe, but like, you know, there's no connection at all to what's going on up there for pedestrians.
It's the backside of everything that's facing south, yeah, yeah. Any other nuggets that Shruti or Troy, you're looking for from us?
I think you covered all the main topics, so, thank you.
Well, the, the one thing that, just before we go there, I do see the new community center there, we didn't chat about that. I just want to say, I, I, I forget where that was going to go, it was going to go, you were looking at it north of the Fox Hills Park. Maybe we can just bring up that slide, but either way.
So on the map, we are indicating kind of the yellow bubble as a potential area where that community center might be a beneficial addition to the plan, fronting the park, but still embedded in the neighborhood with access from all the residences.
Was there much public response to this?
I think the idea of the community center resonated. There were some questions about where specifically it would go, and, you know, most of the, the land area within the neighborhood is privately owned, and so how that would be navigated. None of those specifics have been arrived at, this is highly conceptual at this point, so this was more a conversation about, wouldn't it be nice? But I think from that point on, part of the work of the specific plan will be trying to understand what the implementation actions could look like.
Yeah, the, the topography there is serious, seriously challenging for that park, right? Like, you can't, anywhere along Buckingham and Green Valley Circle, you've got 50 feet of hillside or something that, before you get to the park, so. Did you have thoughts on it?
Well, I mean, yeah, if we were doing this 70 years ago, we'd be directing everyone to the mall. In the mall, it's, it's, there's this little gray square that we're almost ignoring, which is just fascinating, right? And I, and I understand, there's, the thought was, we need a different, literally different community center, a different center for this community other than the mall. And I, I don't know what form that takes, but I wouldn't want to give up on that, I would want to make something of that central to what, what ends up happening, because I think that's something that Fox Hills is going to need. And right now, the park would sort of play that role, but it also, it, it's limited. You know, the community center is where you get to have, you know, the, the public meetings is where you get to have the Girl Scouts meet, and the Boy Scouts meet, and do, and all that stuff. So, I, I can't imagine what we do with it as private land, I don't know how that works, but would love to see something like that somehow make it into a final version of the plan.
I can see also, from a location standpoint, the fact that it is on the north side of the park really starts to kind of activate the rest of the, of Fox Hills neighborhood to the north, you know, like, you're, is it, right now, it's just the backside of all that kind of low-rise, tilt-up buildings that are over there. And if that's going to transform this way, you now make a connection there, and it also kind of wakes up the north side of the park. That, that northwest corner of Fox Hills Park is kind of, it's just leaf litter and a couple of picnic benches, right? And this now opens it up and activates that side of the park. And I think there's a lot of kind of underutilized area there that's part of the park that now you're going to connect with, because it's kind of hidden behind the tennis courts and away from the playground, you know, or something like that.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have anything to add, except I, the community center is very, very important. And it's actually, I mean, I think that I had thought about, you know, I guess it's thrown around a lot, I don't know what the chances are that the mall would be redeveloped into, into something. I mean, that's often thrown around, but I, again, it seems, I, I don't know, I don't know how realistic it is. If that were a community center, I mean, I mean, not, not saying that's what you're suggesting, but I'm imagining like, that kind of big redevelopment could include something that is a, a big public amenity, but it is pretty, pretty far away from a lot of what's going on in Fox Hills. I like, I do like the location that, that, for this, this idea is, is not, not just central to the new density, but real close to, you know, the folks who live there right now.
It kind of reminds me of the Culver West Park, you know, like, that's that, the, the building on Culver West Park that connects to one side of the kind of neighborhood, and then the, the, the field and everything else is the other side of the neighborhood, and it, it becomes the paseo because it's the park itself. Yeah, yeah. Cool. Well, I think unless you have anything in specific questions, that's our feedback.
Oh, thank you very much, that was great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments for items not on the agenda?
We do not have any one.
Okay, great. And I think there was one other, there was items from staff related to commissions and vacancies and whatnot?
Yes, Ruth is going to mention that, but before we do that, I just wanted to let you know there won't be a planning commission meeting on April 23rd, but we will be reviewing the draft sign code in May.
Would it be May 7th, then?
It's more likely to be the second meeting in May.
So the, the 21st, or whatever the next, okay. Okay.
All right. This is an announcement on behalf of the city clerk's office, who has begun the annual recruitment to fill vacancies within all citywide commissions, boards, and committees, commonly referred to as CVCs. Applications from interested Culver City residents are currently being accepted online at www.culvercity.org/serv through Monday, May 12, 2025 by 5:00 PM. This is an opportunity for students, residents, and others invested in Culver City to participate in advising the city council on various topics in the community and to dive into local government. We are especially focused on outreach to our youth, as there is currently a position specifically dedicated to a youth representative available on the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, ERAC, which we hope to fill with someone still in school. There are 27 diverse volunteer positions spread across the city's many advisory bodies open for appointment. Currently, the, the planning commission has two vacancies to be filled, which are seat two and three. Chair Rowman has completed two terms, and Commissioner Carter has completed her first term. Positions are available to all Culver City residents who are over the age of 16. Anyone applying who is under the age of 18 must obtain consent from their parent or legal guardian. To find out more information about the application process, the objective or description of the specific CBC, or apply to volunteer, residents are encouraged to visit our website at www.culvercity.org/serv, or call the city clerk's office at 310-253-5851. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Come be a planning commissioner, it's fun. Is there any items?
You have one item.
Yeah.
I, I believe Director Munzer was in Denver and received an award on behalf of the planning department. If you have a few words to say about that, I'd love to hear it.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Yes, I have returned from very cold and snowy Denver, so they will not be counting me as a future resident. I'm very, very happy here in greater Los Angeles. Yes, so Culver City received the Housing Innovation Category Award from a division of the American Planning Association who was having their national planning conference. There's a ton of acronyms, but the crux of it is, is we, along with two other communities, one being Tucson, Lauren, the staff member who was there with me, I can't remember who the third was, but there was a reception and an event where, you know, we were noted for that award, I said a few words, and, you know, it really, one of the things that, that I said and that I reported out that, when I was going to the conferences, is really the word innovation. And, you know, I know that all of you are proud of that, I know the council is, many members of the community, certainly the staff, that the general plan, which was General Plan 2045, which was what the award was for, was something that was very forward-thinking, and that was as out of the box as you can get when you're talking zoning codes and land use regulations. So it was nice to be commended for that. I know there's a follow-up conversation with the fellow award winners, so that others can learn, not just between the award winners, but others who are members of this division, so they can learn best practices, which is, you know, not to say that we are perfect, but we were awarded for a best practice, and for that, I'm, I'm very proud and very honored that I was able to accept the award on behalf of the city, or applying for many more. So, from various professional development associations, and hopefully I'll have more to report out. Thanks, Vice Chair.
Nice. Thank you for that. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, moved by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Vice Chair Menti. Please vote. Thank you, motion to adjourn passes with four eyes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 9:22 PM.